Keel Jane, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Charles. Okay. Um. Joe Chadwick, I see. See Fred. Uh Sharon. Okay, do we know if Dave Dyer's coming?
Let me ask Michelle, because I was out yesterday.
I have not heard from him at all, Chuck.
Okay, Michelle.
I believe that Joe V has his hand raised.
Right. Is Joe a co-host? Joe Vayuso, is he?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Joe, can you hear us?
Yes, I could.
Okay. I don't know why your hand is raised, but it shows it is raised. I assume it was just to alert people you were here, so.
Chuck, this is Massimo, I'm here.
Okay, Massimo, great.
I'm back.
All right. Back from where, dare I ask?
Oh, I spent a month in Florida. Started my summer early.
Now, it's time to go, for sure.
I think the brink is a good catch-all answer also.
Right. Okay. Okay, I've got a little after seven. I don't see Dave, but I know he's sometimes unable to make meetings, so we will. I think we can go ahead and get started, so. Um, we'll call this meeting.
Recording stopped.
Oops.
Let's start it again, please.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
We'll call this meeting the Bramford Planning Zoning Commission Order. It is Thursday, April 24th, 2025. I have about 7:01 PM. We'll start by introducing members of our commission and staff. Joe Chadwick, commission member, you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo, Fred, are you here?
Fred Russo is present.
Thanks, Fred. Joe Vayuso, Joe, are you here?
Joe Vayuso is here.
Commission member Marcy Palusi, Marcy, are you here?
Marcy's here.
Massimo Mogory, Massimo, you're back, yes?
Massimo is here.
Thanks, Massimo. Sharon Hutner, Sharon, you're here?
Sharon Hutner is here.
Thanks, Sharon. And I don't see Dave Dyer. Dave, are you here? But we'll continue. And our staff this evening is introducing our new town planner, McKeel Whackers. McKeel, are you here?
I am here, thank you, Charles.
Okay, we'll get to on their other business. We'll give you a chance to introduce yourself and give us all a little background.
Thanks.
Our helping planner is John Kuskowski. John, are you here?
I am here, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, John. And our zoning enforcement officer, Jane Ellis. Jane, are you here?
Yes, I am.
And our clerk recording secretary, Michelle Martin, is lurking in the background. I see her face. I am Chuck Anders' chair. And we'll start by asking our secretary Fred Russo to read the notice of public hearing.
Legal notice, Town of Bramford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Bramford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearings to be held on Thursday, April 24th, 2025, at 7:00 PM by remote technology to consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearings will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Application number 25-2.5, special exception modification for an existing PDD, a planned development district, located at 52, 54, 56, and 58 Maple Street, formerly known as 60 Maple Street. Mariners Landing LLC, Inc., Robert Sacks, member, applicant, and owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, 1019 Main Street, Bramford, Connecticut, 06405. Written communications may be sent to the above address or to planning and zoning at bramford-ct.gov. Bramford Planning and Zoning Commission, see Andres' chairperson.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Fred.
All right.
We'll follow our normal format with the public hearings, which is the applicant goes first, makes its presentation, including comments from consultants. After the applicant makes its initial presentation, return it over to the commission and staff, typically here a summary from a staff report, open it up for questions, comments from the commission. After that point, we invite the public participation, public to participate. And I'm going to ask one of our staff to just go over the process for that, the technology for that. But simply we ask that we do state your name and address for the record. Uh, make your comments, and then after the public portion, we allow the applicant to respond to any of the public comments. There may be additional questions, comments from commission members and staff. We may or may not close a public hearing, certainly not unusual, keep it open more than one hearing, one night of a hearing, so. So that will be our process. So, um, I don't know if someone.
I have it, Chuck.
Okay, Jane, you want to explain the process for participation?
The process is only if you have a computer that has a microwave with two-way communication, then during a public hearing, if you wish to speak, press the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen in that participant window, right where you can, if you hover over the bottom of your screen. If you do not have a microphone, you will need to call in on the phone to speak, and you would press star nine and raise your hand. The information for how to dial is on the agenda. During a public hearing, if you do not wish to speak, you may type your comments into the chat feature again on the bottom of your computer. And we'll do our best to monitor this feature. However, it is always best if you can speak as an option by waving your hand. Those joining using a computer and Zoom software should note that typing in your full name to view the meeting only and not speak is not required. A pseudonym may be used. Again, if you wish to speak, you will need to give your name according to the Public Act 22-3. All instructions are on the agenda if you require more information. And that's that.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Jane. In terms of using the chat function, we'd really try to discourage that for making substantive comments. There may be a question, hey, I can't hear you, or something like that. But in terms of compiling a record, the record is going to be the actual, it's not always. It gets a little bit uncertain whether you get the chat stuff in the record, and voice is always better, so that's with our preferences, certainly to make the people speak if you have a comment. So with that, we will go with our agenda. Item number one on our agenda is, for public hearings, is Kim McCabe and Charles Watts, applicant's owner, 38 Howard Avenue. This is a matter that we had opened at our last meeting on April 3rd and continued to our meeting of May 1st, so that that is not on the agenda for this evening. That'll be at our next meeting, which is actually in a week on May 1st. So that's it for item number one. Item number two and item number three is both Mariners Landing LLC, care of Robert Sacks, member, applicant, owner. And the address is 52, 54, 56, 58, and 60 Maple Street. It's a special exception. Approved residential development with mixed use and a site plan modification and coastal site plan. And is the applicant ready to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we are.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm attorney Marjorie Shansky. I represent Mariners Landing LLC. I'm here this evening with Robert Sacks, a principal of the LLC, and with John Schmitz, professional engineer from BL Companies. We have, in preparation for this meeting, met with staff earlier in April, which generated some revisions, which have been submitted to the commission. We also met with the Town Center Revitalization Review Board. We had a good two-hour meeting with them, which resulted in their approval or recommendation with a couple of modifications that we're happy to discuss with the commission. And I see that we have a letter from DEEP on the coastal site plan. And I spoke with the gentleman, Mr. Lynn, at DEEP yesterday, and he indicated at that time there was nothing significant in his letter, and I think that is probably inept characterization. I leave that to the commission. In any case, Mr. Chairman, I have a procedural question since two and three have been called together. There are a plethora, about 24 modifications to the site plan, many of which are very minor. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be auspicious for convenience and coherence to start going down the numbered list of those. The special exception item is way down on the list, so it would sort of be a natural progression. And if that we're okay with the chair?
Certainly, if that's the applicant's preference, we can certainly handle that. It's certainly one site. I know it's two separate applications, but certainly we're considering them all together, and if that's, you think, believes most efficient, we're happy to proceed that way.
I think that we'll be focused in that manner. But, so with that, we were approved in February of 2021 for Mariners Landing, which was a parcel of land that was cut off of the original Anchor Reef through its declaration, which provided for such severance down the line. There are four residential multifamily apartment buildings, however one characterizes them, three of which are fully constructed, one of which is almost completely occupied, another of which is occupied, and the third, I think, is just coming online, and the fourth one has been framed, so it's going very well, and I hope that you've been to the site because it's very, very beautiful, and in connection with it, the town dock has been, or the dock that attaches to the town dock, has been rehabilitated. There's now a 20-slip marina in front of it. The part of this application this evening includes the kayak racks, and there's a kayak launching facilitation mechanism that's being added on to the dock. And of course, there's that wonderful walking path that goes through and around the waterfront and the development. So that is, I guess, by way of introduction, and if you have seen Mr. Guskowski's report and/or the application, both, he has clipped out the list of 24 site plan modifications, and I think Mr. Schmitz will take the commission through them.
Sure, thank you. The record, my name is John Schmitz. I'm a senior engineer with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Maryland, Connecticut. And I'm going to share a screen. We could go through the site. Okay, you should see in front of you just an aerial image of the site, just to kind of orient you with where we're at. The site is at this location, Bramford River, along the bottom of the screen. You see Indian Neck Avenue here, the traffic signal at Maple Street located here, the train station across from us. You can see the three buildings that Attorney Shansky mentioned that are already constructed here, kind of forming a U shape facing the pool and the river. And this building to the right, this is the fourth building, which is under construction now. And just kind of gives you a general feel for the site and what's around us. Again, Anchor Reef are the buildings here to the left, Nellie Greens further off to the right. I'm just going to switch over and show you the one of the plans that we have here. So, the plan you see now is sheet C 0.00. It is a overall site plan of the entire site.
It did not change, John.
Go back, share that again. Okay, here we go. So this sheet is sheet C 0.00. It's the overall key plan. And basically what it does is it shows you where the 24 site modifications are, and I'm just going to kind of walk you through those briefly to point out where they are. I'll highlight them on the plan for you. So number one is just the installing for EV charging stations. That's at this location on the left-hand side. That's to install EV chargers for four parking spaces at that spot. Number two is to construct a dumpster pad. That would be an enclosed structure just north of that at this location here. Number three is to construct 58 Maple. Obviously, that's currently under construction. That would be, or rather, has already been constructed, so just to identify the buildings, building 58 here, already constructed, building 56 here, constructed, number 54, and then the building number 52 that's under construction currently is the building further to the right. Item number four is to modify those buildings. Under the previous application, the buildings were identified as A, B, C, D. They've since been given numbers, so the site plan's been updated to reflect that. Number five is to install infrastructure for some additional six EV stations. Those are located centrally in the lot on the site, and those are located right here, just north of building number 54. Number six is to construct another dumpster pad that is located at this area, just across from the site entrance. Number seven is to narrow the central island. That's again, right here in the center of the site where the EV chargers were located, there. Number eight is to eliminate the pool cabanas. So the pool is centrally located. The pool cabana was here. It's basically tied in, you'll notice on the key, it's eight and nine, because what we've done is eliminate the pool cabanas, but install a, construct a 17-by-50-foot bathhouse. That was a requirement of the state to provide bathrooms and changing rooms directly adjacent to the pool. So that takes care of that item. Number 10, here is to construct two fire pits and two grilling stations, amenities for the residents. Originally, I think those were proposed inside the pool deck or adjacent to the pool deck, but under the the health code, we're not allowed to have food adjacent to the pool and within that area, so those were moved to this area here. Number 11 is to install wall packs various locations where we have parking under the buildings. As you may recall, we not only have surface parking, but we also have parking under the buildings on the first level, and so we provided wall packs at some of those entrances to provide some additional lighting where the driveways enter into those buildings. Number 12 would include constructing the pylon, or rather, the monument sign, which is out by Indian Neck Road, right at the boulevard. That's located there. Number 13 was a minor modification for light poles. Basically, all the light poles, the light fixtures, they've been installed on-site. The ones that originally proposed could not, I think there was some issue with the manufacturer. The models were no longer under production, so another fixture was chosen. And so that reflects that the light poles were updated recently. Number 14, again, EV charging is to provide more EV chargers. Point those out. Those are on the far right-hand side at this location here, just to the east of building number 52. And then, let's see, number 15, another dumpster pad that's located here. It's adjacent to the driveway entrance off of the private access road on the right-hand side here. Number 16 is to extend some of the balconies, the balconies, patios on building 52. So this only affects this one building, and that's to increase the balcony size from five feet deep to eight feet to provide a more usable space to tenants. Number 17 is to construct a 12-foot wide access drive between the two buildings. That is this driveway here that is being proposed, just to provide some better circulation for maintenance and snow plowing equipment, as well as emergency access for fire vehicles, because currently there's no direct connection from the western portion of the development to the eastern parking area. You currently have to go all the way back out to Indian Neck Drive and then come around, so this provides an additional connection for those maintenance vehicles. Number 18 includes just construction of the patio that was always proposed at this location to the south end of building 52. Number 19 is just to address, adjust the wayfinding signage. There's a sign here. There's some others. I'll go through that plan as well shortly. That's for the public access to the waterfront. We just had to adjust some of the signage, the locations. Number 20 is to construct a future maintenance building. That's this rectangular structure you see here, kind of centrally located. It's not constructed now. It would be, there's area reserved for future construction of that building. Number 22 is to modify concrete sidewalks between building 52 and 54. Again, that would include this sidewalk here. The modifications are really related to the fact that the grades, the elevation of building 54 was raised about a foot, so there are some minor modifications for the elevations of this sidewalk to allow for ADA accessibility between the two buildings. Number 22 is to construct the parking lot. That's this new lot that we are proposing to modify. The previous approval always included a lot here. That lot, you can see the yellow line that I have here indicates the previous limits of pavement. This L-shaped lot contained 30 parking spaces, which included seven parking spaces located here. What we've done is move those spaces into the lot, to the interior of the lot, and to add some additional parking to create a lot of 41 total parking spaces. They're able to maintain, you know, some of the green lawn that was previously there, just kind of reoriented it. Number 23 is the kayak storage. That would be down here at the far southeast of the site, adjacent to the, not only the walking path, but also to the river. And then this, you see, extending to the south. This is the town dock, so kayak storage at that location. And then number 24, again, just highlighted here, providing additional wall packs at the entrance to the underground, or the first-story parking to building number 52. That's a quick rundown of the 24 highlighted items. Some of them are more substantial than others. Some are just some housekeeping. And then just quickly, I'll run through the wayfinding sheet that I mentioned before. This is sheet PS 1-1, and highlights where some of the public access signage is located or will be located. The main thing I want to point out here is item number B. B is one of the parking signs. Under the previously approved plan, the parking sign was over here. There are four spaces reserved for the public, adjacent to Anchor Reef. Those spaces are being moved further to the east onto our development, so we would move that sign and provide that space for public parking. Again, it's adjacent to sidewalks here that allow public access all the way down to the river, and then, of course, we have public sidewalk, public walking all the way along the frontage of the river, and again, to the dock. The plan also highlights some of the other wayfinding signs along Main Street to indicate access into the site here, as well as that Indian Neck Avenue at the intersection, the signalized intersection, and then again, at our main entrance coming into Indian Neck. Some additional signage at the at the previous parking area that we had before, new parking, and we'd be providing some additional parking spaces in this location for the public to park, again, for accessibility to the trail and to the waterfront. I just kind of want to point that out. And Marcy, I'd be happy to turn things over to you. Or we could go into some more detail with the parking. It's kind of up to you where you want to go.
Mr. Chairman, are there some, any questions from the commission about that sort of list of modifications? And I realize when I ask that, I'm really talking about 1 through 21, and 23 and 24, 22 being the one that is within the special exception.
Ms. Shansky, I don't know if there are, but you know what? Why don't you go ahead and complete the presentation if anyone has questions about the ones you mentioned, we'll ask them at that time.
Very well. So the the request on the on the increase in the number of parking spaces, item number 22, is reflected, first of all, as it was originally submitted, which was the elimination of the green space. And after our meeting with the with staff earlier this month, we submitted this revised plan that retains the green space, but, and moved those six parking spaces further to the west, if you will, and added a number of additional parking spaces, because it became obvious that with a 20-slip marina and the kayak rack, maybe not so much the kayak rack that might be used by people who actually live at Mariners Landing, but the the kayak launching mechanism and the improvement to the town dock and the end of the walking trail, or beginning, depending where you start, had the bulk of the public access components converging at this one spot on the development where there really wasn't adequate parking for the public. And so this was an effort to reconcile the practical use of the public access component, which we think is robust and important. But in order to really encourage its use and provide a way that makes people want to use it and actually use it. And I understand that, you know, the sort of debate about the use on building 52 on the first floor is not appropriately before the commission tonight, but this parking issue does relate simply to the public access component, and to the extent that we've been able to reconcile the retention of a lot of, and I don't know, I asked Mr. Schmitz to be able to quantify what amount of it we're preserving in this alternative. It was met with enthusiasm by the Town Center Revitalization Review Board. And I would say, in looking at the special exception criteria, one of which at section 9.8. Pardon me, one second. Don't have it on the convenient page, 9.8. F. 8. Talking about the adequacy of parking areas, you know, there's adequacy of parking areas from a numerical perspective under a zoning ratio calculation, but there's also practical realities, and and this is in deference to the public access all being sort of, as I said, converging at this point, and at the waterfront and with the path and the kayak facility and the marina. So that is the basis of this request, and it seeks to retain both elements, but to be more serviceable and more practical. And I think that's all I want to say about it right now, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'd just like to jump in quickly to highlight what Marcy mentioned, or rather, I'm sorry, Attorney Shansky, is that on the Plan C 1.0, where we have a more detailed plan of the parking, we do provide a breakdown of the green space at this location, so roughly, that would relate to the passive recreation area, which is the green space located here in the far southeast corner of the site. The previous plan had a green space in there of 16,377 square feet. With the new relocation, reconfigured parking, it would drop to 14,736 square feet, so it's roughly a reduction of 1,600 square feet, or roughly 10% of the green space In that in that rectangular shaped area would be would be reduced. Again, about the ten percent reduction over the previous approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, anything else, Ms. Shansky, at this time?
Not not right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, just one question before we turn over the staff report. He mentioned a couple of times the twenty-slip marina. Is that, I don't remember that being part of this use, is that something new? Is that? I I I'm just, how, is is that an existing? I I'm not sure.
There was an existing sort of dilapidated marina. And in connection with the rehabilitation of the dock, it has been restored as well. And it's available for the public and it's available for the occupants of Mariners Landing.
Okay, and and is there any increase in the number of slips? Or is that, is this an existing use? That's, I guess my question.
I believe it's an existing use.
So there is right now, even though it may have been dilapidated, there was a a twenty-slip marina or twenty slips there now? Or is there, there's no addition? Okay, so that that is not something new?
Correct.
Okay.
As I understand it, yes, that was the discussion at Town Center yesterday.
Okay. Okay, why don't we, at this point, we'll turn over for the staff report. We have, I think. Mr. Guskowski did a staff report, and I believe Mr. Whackers went to the revitalization meeting, so we'll turn it over to you guys to maybe summarize that.
Okay, so for the record, John Guskowski, interim planning assistant. So I I prepared the, I participated in a meeting with the applicant and we went through the plan a couple of weeks ago. I prepared the staff memo on Monday. I'll highlight a few things, but I, most of the, most of the open-ended stuff that was in my staff report. Has essentially been dealt with by subsequent revisions to the site plan. And what we will be ultimately left with is sort of the larger special exception philosophical question of of green space versus parking. And and that modification. So again, I I went through all of the the numbered changes that Mr. Schmitz reviewed with you. And most of them, by by and large, all of them were appropriate adjustments based on. You know, discovered conditions once the construction started. So, you know, some of the the islands needed to be narrowed to improve backing ratios and the and the the wall packs needed to go above the the garages. Obviously, because of public health reasons, the the cabanas had to be turned into a poolhouse with restrooms, et cetera. So most of those changes, and my my staff report breaks those down, are what I, what we would feel would be appropriate for site plan modifications. The things that I had called out were in item twelve regarding monument signage. And item nineteen relocated wayfinding. At the time of the writing of my report. The, there was no indication on the the site plan which signs were being relocated to which locations. They have subsequently provided a signage detail that that, you know, replaces and shows the the. You know, sort of the brown waterfront access signs, the monument signage, and the and the public parking wayfinding. So I, you know, in following up, I find that 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 signage detail sufficient. Again, McKeel can can add some details to that. Additionally, the light poles in number thirteen. Did not call out the specific pole locations, I believe that was modified. And they they also submitted a revised photometric plan. So those comments from the Monday's staff memo have been addressed. There are a couple of, the one other thing that I think we would like a little bit more detail on. Because this is a PDD, it's essentially a new zone that has agreed to standards. You know, height, building separation, coverage setbacks and that sort of thing. In the original approval. That was approved in twenty twenty-one, I believe. The maximum coverage ratio, which is essentially impervious coverage, was sixty percent or, you know, point six. And their site plan was indicated at sixty percent. They 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 capped it out, basically. And with this revised proposal, which essentially proposes to remove some level of green space from that southeast corner. And turn it into parking, presumably pervious parking, I'm sorry, impervious parking. The ratio would go above sixty percent, and so we would need some modification. However, the site plan that they that that was submitted, the revised site plan, showed that they're still at a sixty percent allowable percentage. But are now below despite adding impervious surface. And my understanding was, and I'd be happy to, through you, Mr. Chairman, request that the the engineering team. Explain how they were able to add impervious surface, but still, you know, fall below their maximum threshold of sixty percent impervious. I'll I'll stop there, I think that might be an appropriate thing to to respond to at this point.
Does the app wish to respond, Ms. Shansky?
Sure, I'll let Mr. Schmitz do that.
Again, for the record, John Schmitz with BL. So I'm I'm happy to provide the documents, but the first thing we did was go back and double check the original application to determine. Are we truly at sixty percent? We went through the original design, calculated the impervious areas for sidewalks, buildings. Parking, everything, and determined that the original application was not at sixty percent, but that it was actually at fifty-seven point five percent. And then given, we went back and then said, well, based on the adding the parking, the new. Drive on the southeast, we went through our numbers and determined that the the new impervious would then increase up to fifty-eight point nine percent. So happy to provide the documents showing the backup of how we got to those numbers. But so we did increase the impervious, but it was based off of, again, the understanding that the original application was not at sixty. It was only at fifty-seven point five, so there was, in fact, some some room to to increase impervious coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Mr. Guskowski, any follow-up or you?
Sure, yeah, so thank you, again, for the record, John Guskowski. I would just, you know, request that they basically submit the math on that. There's just a, just a calculation sheet, just so we have that as part of the record. And then, so that, those are, those are sort of the minor things. Then then really, the big fundamental question is, is the, is the conversion, the proposed conversion of green space. To parking, public and largely public parking. And I discussed it at some length in my in my staff report. And it's, it sort of boils down to a question of what is the public amenity that the commission wishes to see and support. On this site and 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 in this location as part of a recreation network. And and that's really the fundamental question of the 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 special exception before you. I think there is significant support in the Planet Conservation and Development and the Transit Oriented Development Study. Which dealt with this site as well as a lot of linked sites. That the the amenity, the the principal amenity that the the community is looking to to promote along this area is the water. The access to the water itself, water-based uses, as well as the waterfront for for recreation and, you know, walking and that sort of thing. And clearly, the the waterfront access, both the kayak and pier and the walking trails that are included as part of this. Are significant public amenities that, you know, it is important to consider. And it's my understanding that the applicants, and and frankly, perhaps the commission at the at the time of original approval. Didn't necessarily think about the 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 waterfront uses, the the walking trails in the dock. As a draw and as a driver of parking demand, public parking demand. The vast majority, I think, almost all of the parking that's provided on site is essentially dedicated to the residential uses. And there's very little, there was really only a few off-street parking spaces that were sort of available to the public. And the sense was, that's probably not enough if this is going to be a true draw. So that was the the. A lot of the basis behind the proposed parking redesign and the the increase in parking at the expense of the green space. There was no, in the original approval, no clear purpose or intent or call it programming. For that little green area. It wasn't going to be a pickleball court, it wasn't going to be a baseball field or or, you know, some sort of dedicated picnic grounds. It was just green space, lawn space. And and there was no set aside, you know, open space requirement as part of the the conditions of the PDD. Obviously, that the whole plan was adopted as part of the PDD, and that's what's being proposed for modification. But there was really no, we need this park here for X reason. And so it's really up to the commission to kind of determine what's the most important resource and how do we, how do we best promote and and support that? From that standpoint, and so that my my staff proposal went into, went into some of that detail. In terms of findings, generally speaking, with with all the caveats that I just stated. It's largely harmonious with the with the original terms of approval. Both the the site plan requirements, coastal site plan requirements, and we did get the confirmation from DEP today. And then broadly applicable to to special exception criteria, it's certainly approvable by that if if the commission sort of agrees philosophically. And then I have a few conditions that we can, we can get to, and some are not applicable as, because some of the signage and other details have been provided following my report. And I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and and turn it over to McKeel if he'd like to to provide some update.
Thank you, John. The comments are from staff subsequent to John's memo are really related to the design review. That the Town Center Revitalization Review Board performed yesterday. They recommend approval, essentially of the new parking lot design. And they also recommended screening of the proposed dumpster sites on the site plan. And they lean towards landscaping, but they did not provide a specific prescription for that screening. Other than they would, they wished to see something. And then the recommendation finally was that the the access drive between the two parking lot areas internally. Should be signed as no through traffic. They felt it was not, you know, it was purpose, purpose of property maintenance as opposed to circulation. But that was their their recommendation. And I'll leave it at that.
Chuck Anderson, sir, thank you, Mr. Whackers, thank you, McKeel. Any other comments from staff this time? Let's open up the questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public, any member of the commission wish to comment?
Chuck?
Yes.
I would like to say first, I'm glad we have a local developer involved with this project. I think it's always easier to work with a local developer than someone that's from out of town that we're not familiar with. Secondly, I'm a big fan of this public access component. And if we're going to have that, we have to make it available to the public to use it. If if it requires a little bit more parking, and I'm going to assume that the numbers that Mr. Schmidt gave are correct. It seems like there is available, available area there that additional parking can be put in. And if that's the case, then that means there are going to be more public input and use of the facility. I I think it's a, it's a, you know, a gem. I mean, having something on the Bradford River like that is just a beautiful thing, and then making it accessible to the the public is even better, you know. I'm hoping that one day that trail that we've talked about for several years now gets fully completed. But that would be a a key part of this whole plan. So, you know, if you're going to have something that's open to the public, you have to at least have a way for them to get there and perk their cars. It's not fair to the the residents who live in the in the apartments that their places or spaces should be taken in any way. And so I I think, you know, if we as a commission have an obligation to make sure that if we're going to have a a a public access. Public space, it should be accessible. And I know we can't put in fifty parking spaces, but we should put in whatever the maximum is so that we can get the maximum number of people. To use that 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 spot when it's available. Thank you.
Chuck Anderson, sir, thanks, Fred. Other questions, comments from commission members while we open up the public, Marcy?
Hi, I'm Marcy Paluzzi. You know, it's it's a PDD, and by nature of a PDD, we're supposed to be looking holistically at the plan, the overall uses that it provides. And, you know, I think many times in planning, we get much too mired in what percent of coverage, this, that, and so forth. So, you know, I I'm looking at this with a broad brush, and I agree with what Fred was saying. But I also had a couple of just sort of semantic questions about what's happened between then and now. You know, obviously, there were dumpsters considered on the first go-through. I didn't really hear whether those were moved or these are additional dumpsters. You know, did something change with the way the trash is being circulated through the site? So that, just in general scope, I'm not looking to say we had three and now we have two, but just sort of what changed. And then my other question is, I do remember the dock being there previously, I do remember the. The slips being there and being in very poor repair. And I recently took a look at it, and it's, you know, a great improvement. And, you know, obviously, people are going to want to use those slips, and I don't really understand who manages it. Whether it's managed through the Mariners Landing or if it's managed by an outside entity. Relative to what's happening along that access way, you know, and then, you know, thirdly. You know, are there pets and whatnot in the complex and has anybody considered a dog park or using, you know, that? That green space as a more active space that could be used by the the public. And I I think sometimes, you know, it's not that you're sixteen hundred square foot less green space. But what's proposed, you know, for its use, you know, is it meant to be passive, you know, relief to the, for the buildings? Or is there an active use that can be proposed for the residents and the community? You know, with, you know, and I'm being theoretical, is that appropriate to have an active use there? Or is it better suited as a passive use? But, you know, I do think that having, you know, clear access, which they've done to that river. And that boat launch for the kayaks is a great amenity to the town, and if we could just get the neighbors to connect it across, it would be a home run.
Chuck Anderson, sir, thanks, Marcy. I have sort of a follow-up to that, it's, and and I know the issue of a possible change of use is not in front of us. You mentioned that, Ms. Shansky. However, I do recall this, in this last building, there was a public coffee shop or something. Restaurant coffee shop, something that would encourage the public to actually get down there so they could actually enjoy the use. And I remember that being touted originally, and and that was, that made it more of a mixed use, not simply more residential. Because at the time of this, I remember the sign saying, stop Bradford over development, there was whatever. And I, one of, one of the things that I thought the developer properly said, that this was a way to. For for that type of use to to help the public get down there. And you could see it even with the Nellie Greens and Stony Creek Restaurant, that people go to those places. And they're introduced to the river, to the coastal resource in a way that they otherwise would not have known about. So I'm just flagging this as an issue that maybe it's my own personal concern. That the, that that, my understanding is, part of this development, there is a component of a of a. Restaurant coffee shop, maybe, you know, it could be something, I don't know, it could be a museum or something or a. Something publicly related that would be right there, down there. And I, because I do remember that, I remember pictures of people sitting on the lawn and so forth, I understand all the arguments. But 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 I'm I'm flagging that as an issue, even though it's not in front of us. So, other members of the pub, of the commission wish to have any questions or comments before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, Chuck, Masimo here.
Masimo.
I I actually had the pleasure to, I took a walk, I live right around the corner from Mariners Landing. And I took my dog for a walk on Tuesday. It was, it was a pretty nice day. And and I actually ended up walking down there and I was checking the site out, and I walked on the walkway. And I I got to tell you, it was, it it's it's an asset to the town of Bradford. It's, I think that. You know, the parking, that's the extra parking that's going to be made available for the public. I I think it's a necessity, I think common sense wise, we need that. And I'm gonna, I think that's enough of an attraction to have that pier and also to have. and also to have the launching pad there for the kayaks and, and what have you. I think that's enough of, 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 for the public to want to be attracted to that area and go down there. I actually feel almost a little bit opposite, Chuck, because I think that if you have a restaurant or a coffee shop or whatever they're going to put down in those areas there, I think it's going to just create a lack of parking and create more of a, a parking issue in that area. The attraction is going to be go for a nice straw, maybe throw a fish and pull off the pier. And, and, and I think that's going to be enough for the summer, for the summer crowd. Also, I also think that it's going to be great for the existing businesses that are around the area. I think Nellie Greens and Pacilios and what have you around there are going to actually probably get busier and, and, and help out the local businesses around that area. So I don't know if we do need a coffee shop there, if it's going to create a more of a parking hazard. And I just think that it's really pretty. Once the, once the people around the town go to that area and realize that it's such a beautiful sight to walk through and it's open to the public, it's just enough of an attraction. Too much of an attraction, I think, might create too much distraction.
Chuck Anderson, sir, thank you, Massimo. And that's something obviously we can debate and certainly you can have different views in, in good faith. I, I will point out that the dock has been there for a decade. It's, it's frankly, it's been open to the public for a decade and there has not been much use. Obviously, it's improved. Maybe there's a pathway that'll help, but anyway, that, that, that is something we, we could look at. Other members of the commission, Sharon, did you have some comments?
Yeah, I did. I agree with Massimo. I actually went walking there as well. And it really is a beautiful walkway. And I think a great addition to that part of the Branford River. But I have a couple of questions. First of all, the EV chargers that are being installed, which I think is a great part of the development, will those be open to the public?
Yes.
Okay, great. And so the signage around the EVs will indicate that?
The credit card slot will indicate that.
Okay, all right. And also, it's, I don't really know, there's a whole lot of parking across the street from Mariners Landing. I know that the overflow from the Stony Creek Brewery parks there. Now, I don't know if the Stony Creek Brewery people own that lot, or is that just open to the public?
I don't know the answer.
Any know?
I think Stony Creek owns it. The train station parking lot, however, is also close by.
Right. And so in terms of the public having access to the property, there's those spots that don't have any kind of gates to get into, which is right across the street. And the other thought that I had was, what is going to keep the residents from parking in those spots that are supposedly for the public? Will they be marked non-residential or for the public only? Or how will that be designated?
First of all, some of the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you want me to respond to these?
Certainly, yes.
Alain Minut, as it were. The, there are some parking spaces for residents under the building as well. And, and that is partially, or the closest spaces to the Building 52 were already for resident parking. And there is resident parking on the other side of Building 52, but they will be marked public parking. And if it is a problem, there can be additional signage to further constrain that impulse.
Oh, that's great. Okay. And in terms of the dumpster that is facing the, the, along the outside sidewalk that hopefully that, that will get the screening, I have to compliment the developers for using native plants and the rest of the development. And hopefully they will choose something native to screen the dumpster as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Those are the questions that I have.
Thank you, Sharon. Other questions, comments from commission members before we open up the public?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On Ms. Paluzzi's questions, that, or, and maybe somebody else as well. There were always dumpsters. These are the locations that are the product of understanding the site and post-construction and the logistics of the site. And they are recycling only. All trash is managed inside the actual buildings for the occupants. So it's just recycling.
Thank you, Ms. Shansky. Any other questions, comments, commission members and staff? If not, then let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I think I see one raised hand, but, but Jane, can you review again the process for public participation?
Public participation is a raise of the hand that you can hit from the bottom of your screen. If you don't have a microphone and you need to call in, you'd have to press star nine and then raise your hand. If you want to speak, you do have to say your name. That's part of the Public Act 22.3. If you just want to listen and not speak, you don't have to place your name. And we would prefer if you raise your hand to speak rather than using the chat icon.
Great. Chuck Anderson, sir, thank you, Jane. Jane, it looks like we have a couple of raised hands. Who, who's first, do you know?
I only see one and it's Gia Nicoletti.
Okay.
Gia, are you here?
I'm here, thank you. I just have a quick question going back to the slips. I know that the stakes that were dilapidated out were taken back from the Indian Neck Yacht Club that were part of the club for many years and they went to this project. But I don't remember in the initial proposal that they were going to be out to 20. So I understand, I'm not currently there, I understand that there's all new docking and that it's been extended to almost Dutch Wharf all the way further down to the public launch space. So can you please confirm that 20 were what was initially given in the proposal?
That, yeah, we'll, we'll ask the applicant to, I, we sort of had the same question. If they were existing or they new? I don't recall, I don't recall slips being part of any proposal, but, but maybe I'm missing something. I, I don't remember.
Yeah, so the slips went from Indian Neck Yacht Club to Mariner, to this project Mariners that were there. And they were, they were, they were dilapidated. But I, again, I don't remember them. I assume they'd be redone for use, but I don't remember them being expanded upon to, you know, encompass more space from the river.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll ask the applicant to address that. Next public comment, Jane?
I have somebody from 2034887376 raised their hand. Hello?
Hi, my name is Peter Concelmo, C O N C E L M O. I'm a resident of Branford, living at Sylvan Point across the river from Mariners Landing. I have a question regarding the reference to cafe or coffee shop that has been referenced during tonight's meeting. And whether the current application before the board includes an expansion of the outdoor area for that particular aspect of the building? And if so, will there be any guidelines towards music that might be live played outdoors in how that will be handled?
Thank you, sir. As, I, I don't believe that's part of this application, but we'll let the applicant respond to that. I don't, I don't think there's any change to, that, that, anything has been proposed with respect to that. And, and I don't remember outdoor music ever being even raised, but, but we'll, we'll, we'll allow the applicant to address that.
Thank you.
And Jane, I see there's a Patricia Dugan?
Yep, correct. Patricia?
Hi, my name is Pat Dugan. I live on Harding Avenue. I remember sitting through the first pass where Mariners Landing was seeking approval for the development that is ongoing. And it was granted. And I think I'm going to approach my question a little bit differently than I normally would. So with 24 modifications to the plan that was approved, what do we as neighbors in Indian Neck have to be concerned about?
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Do you have any, we'll allow the applicant to respond to that. But do you have any other questions that you'd like to mention or other comments?
Well, I, I do have a few other comments, too. I'm a little concerned about what 41 spots are used or will be used for. As you know, I consider the river a gem. I sit on it and I get to enjoy it every day. And that is such a gift for me. So I would hope that it would be for people that wanted to walk the river, the path that's been built, launch their kayaks, maybe launch paddle boards. But I too am concerned that there may be something other than that as in a cafe, a restaurant, an outdoor patio. And we in this neighborhood have had more than our share of noise that goes ignored by the police department when the noise is above the town noise ordinance level. And I don't want to go off on that because that isn't what this is about, but we're, I'm concerned that we might be going down a similar road that we've been down that has really taken a toll on this neighborhood. So that was another one of my questions. But I think there was a lot of talk about trash. And on that subject, again, I consider the river a gem. I consider parts of Branford just absolutely beautiful. And I usually take a daily walk to Branford Point. And as I go by Mariners Landing, there's an area where Indian Neck and Maple meet. And it's a wetlands area usually with cattails, but it has been full of contractor and builder debris, styrofoam, wrappings, things that just would come from a development, not from the sidewalk where maybe people throw banana peel or something. And that's been that way for probably about the winter at least. And I'm thinking, what kind of signal is this that here this, this luxury apartment complex is, you know, trying to do all these wonderful things for the town? And they don't even pick up their own trash. So, you know, I know there was talk about dumpsters and this, but I'm just talking about what I see on my daily walk. And I think that's very disturbing. So I know that's a really small detail in comparison to other things, but I did have to put that in there as well. So those are my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Jane, do you see any other member of the public that wishes to comment?
I do not see anybody else at this time.
Okay. And Ms. Shansky, do you want to respond to the public comments?
I will try, Mr. Chairman. Although the one about the slips, I, I have a file about the Indian Neck Yacht Club, but it's the first time that anybody has asked that through this process. And I'm going to have to locate that, so I can't answer that right now. But I'm happy to supply the answer.
Thank you.
I don't have access to it in the moment. The issue about the, whether there's an expansion of that cafe restaurant, the...
Excuse me, Ms. Shansky, you're, you're, you got muted. You, for some reason, you, I, I don't know what happened.
I think my phone did that. Sorry. With respect to the cafe restaurant, certainly no expansion is requested. The site plan modification was to square off the curved patio that was approved because the placement of four tops is more flexible if you have square edges rather than this curved thing that limits use. So that's a minor modification. Similarly, with respect to the number of modifications, at least three, if not four of them, relate to the installation of the EV chargers, which are required as a matter of state law. And we're simply codifying through the site plan process, the as-built condition or the to-be-as-built condition so that from a zoning enforcement perspective, when Ms. Ellis goes out, the actual development matches the actual site plan. So these are largely technical changes. There's no, really nothing new on the horizon except for the request to modestly increase the number of parking spaces. Because notwithstanding to one commenter's observations that there are these other parking spaces, including, I'm told by text through the course of this hearing, that indeed the brewery does own the across the street lot. The, the location of these parking places with reference to the kayak launching and the path either beginning or end, depending where you start, and, and the other waterfront elements is the issue. And so there may be many, many parking opportunities. But for convenience of, either from mobility perspectives or for schlepping a kayak perspective, there's good reason to want to accommodate parking in the right location. The the two, eight, nine elements on the site plan modification relating to the loss of the cabana and the introduction of the beach, the bathhouse, those are public health code driven. So these are, I think they can all be, even the parking one, be characterized as adjustments either to things that were already there, locating them with specificity or adjusting them from some other regulatory or legal perspective to match what the law requires. So I don't think there's any fear associated with that we need to do this. This is really in order to have the site plan and the site match. And the, I, I would offer that the distinction between the noise of which a couple of the public have spoken and, and about which I've received calls from neighbors relating to that discomfort that they experience. The, the, there's a salient distinction here. We are a residential community that is not setting out to create disruption for the people who are coming to have happy lives in their dwelling units at Mariners Landing. So we are a residential community. And I don't, I think, I think I can say that we're not out to introduce anything that's antithetical to the peace and quiet of that experience. And if I've forgotten anything, Mr. Chairman, if somebody will remind me, I'm happy to respond.
Thank you, Ms. Shansky. Do we have further questions and comments from commission members or staff? Very none. And I guess the issue is, do we continue the public hearing or do we close it? The reason we would continue it is there are a couple of items that sort of came up. One was sort of the calculation sheet of the impervious surface, whether that needs to be verified. And then the second one was the, the issue about the, the slips, the, where this is. I, I don't remember Marina or, or slips being part of the original. I, I don't remember Marina or, or slips being part of the original. It sounds like there was a transfer of interest and it's, and perhaps, you know, it's the same numbers there was before, but I, and but, and frankly, it sounds like one of the things that's driving this extra parking is this, uh, you know, expanded or, or modernized slips. So that, that would be a reason to maybe dig a little bit more of that, continue it. The hearing is next week. Next meeting is next week, so maybe we could defer it for that. But what do other people think? Any, any thoughts from anyone?
Fred Russo, I think we should vote on it tonight.
Okay. So you want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Fred. Any, any other thoughts?
I'd like to see it continue just to answer the few questions.
Thank you. Joe Vayuso?
You are unmuted.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, Chuck, in regards to, uh, the, the dock, I thought it was something to do with Dutch Wharf having those docks over there. Um, and they were, they were so far away from Dutch Wharf or something. There were docks there. Maybe there was a, uh, some, something with...
It was, I'm a member of Indian Neck Yacht Club. They were Indian, they were Indian, they're Indian Neck Yacht Club slips.
Okay, but they're on, Indian Neck is on the other side of the, the water.
Yes, it was an overflow.
An overflow.
Overflow, okay. But I know there was something to do with Dutch Wharf had some, some, uh, floats there too, uh, at one time, I thought. Anyway, it was, it's a few years ago, so I don't remember. But, uh, we'll have the issue on that. But, uh, definitely the parking is needed for, uh, for public access. Uh, it's, it, it would make things, uh, a lot easier. It won't interfere with, uh, the resident parking as much. And that, and it, and as long as there's space there, it, it should, we should, if you're gonna have public access, you, you gotta accommodate, if, if at all possible, uh, some parking for them as well. So I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Joe. And, and I, I would agree too. If more parking were needed, I would, but, but, um, I guess the question is, do we close the public hearing? So let's just go make the rounds. Joe Chadwick, what do you think?
Yeah, Joe Chadwick speaking. I, I don't think, um, any of these issues are tremendously substantive. Um, they are largely housekeeping. They are largely pro forma. Um, I, I am not sure what bearing the slips have on the application. I, I've been trying to peel my way through the, um, the, the list of items. And, and I'm not sure I, what go, no-go situation would be created by the slips. As far as the computation on the, um, impervious surface area, um, if, if this were a landlocked, um, development and the recharge of natural ground was, was a critical issue, I'd say yes, let's wait. Let's, let's look at this and examine it, but the water is going to go right into the sound. Um, we are, we are right on the water. I, I don't see that being, um, a make or break kind of issue. So given the pro forma nature, the housekeeping nature of all this, uh, darn the torpedoes, full speed ahead.
Okay. So you would close the hearing?
I would close the hearing.
Okay. Marcy?
Um, I, I think I'm, I mean, I, I know where I feel about the parking. I mean, I'd like to hear the questions answered. It's only a week. I'm not sure keeping the hearing open to the public is necessary to do that. Um, but I, I'd like to hear the answers to the questions that were posed. Um, so, you know, I guess I, you know, I don't want to make a decision tonight necessarily without hearing the answers. And I, and I thought there were two applications and I know they got combined, but I'm a little confused about whether they have decided not to have the cafe space. Is that part of the vote that we're talking about with this public hearing or is there another application that we're hearing after this one?
My, my, my understanding, nothing is, they, they haven't requested that, that, that they haven't changed to, they, they haven't proposed to change anything about the cafe space. If they do in the future, that would be a separate application. And what they're proposing is that additional parking is needed, um, I guess to help serve the additional use, the, the uses that are there now and including the public access. That, that's the rationale.
Well, yeah. So I mean, yeah, I mean, I thought that you were asking whether we should keep the hearing open to the public or what. So I mean, I think there's...
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't close the public hearing, but I'm not sure we would be making a decision tonight because of the outstanding questions. Is that?
Well, we need to, yeah, no, no, I think that's a fair question, but we would need to keep public hearing open for the applicant to address them. In other words, we close the hearing, we can't hear from the public or the applicant. That's the close of hearing. We just, we're, we're done.
Then, then, I mean, I would want to, I would want to allow the applicant to continue to comment. I mean, cause I'm still a little unclear about who uses the docks. Is that for the residents only?
No.
That's, that's a public amenity and it's, and I'm not clear who manages it because it, is it managed by the, the new?
Mariners Landing?
Or is that managed, managed by Dutch Wharf?
Mariners Landing.
Okay. So that, so that's a commercial component for Mariners Landing. Okay. I mean, I, I think it's important to have the parking to support the docks, you know, but, you know, I just want to have all the facts before I make the decision. You know, and whether if, you know, I think the public has spoken, but I don't want to preclude the applicant from speaking. So if that means leaving it open, I would suggest leaving it open.
Okay. Um, Fred, I think you're favored closing, right?
Yes, I'm favored closing it.
Okay, to close, um, Marcy, I, I would keep it open for a week because other, I, because it's a week. And, and we could get a resolution drafted, presumably a positive one, and, and have all the conditions in the resolution and we could do it after the hearing. So, but, but Joe Vayuso, what do you think? Looks, you want to keep it open? You want to, um?
No, I think we should, uh, I should think we, we should keep it open. We have to give the applicant an opportunity to speak and, and get all the answers. I agree with what Marcy's saying and you.
Okay. Sounds like three to two to keep it open. That's all I'm trying to do. Looks like, looks like, uh, Ms. Shansky, we, we're meeting next week. So, so we just keep it open for a week. I think you get the answers. Find out more detail about the slips and, uh, who owns it. And if, if, if it sounds like would people parking, part of parking be for people to go to the slip? It, it just seems a little confusing. It sounds like, you know, we, if we could just get a little more solidity on that and then get the calculations in and that can be verified by the staff, um, that that works too. So, and then, um, um, then I think we would, my expectation is we'd be in a position to close the hearing and vote at the, in a week. Sharon?
Um, Sharon Hutner here. Could we also get clarification about the cafe? No, it's not, it's not part of the application.
It, it's not part of the application. So right now it, it's, they're not proposing that, that was part of the use, but if they want to change it, they, they would come back.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Right.
Um, this is Massimo speaking. If I, if I may, may I, Chuck?
Yeah, Massimo, go right in.
Yeah. Um, I mean, keeping it open, I mean, I don't know if it's, are we going to ask for them to do more parking spots because of the slips? We're probably not going to deny the amount of parking spots they want, but what's, what's happening here is like, well, we have more slips now that we didn't really clarify. So are we gonna give them even more parking spots? I mean, they're not asking for any more parking spots. I don't understand what the holdup would be.
Okay. Thank you, Massimo.
You're welcome.
I, yeah, I, I think we could, uh, yeah, they, they, they get the information about that. You get the, the additional information would allow the applicant to address the, the issues. I think Ms. Shansky said she has a file. She hasn't had a chance to review it. So I think that, um, it gives her the chance to, uh, a, address that and, uh, we can, uh, we'll, we'll continue it a week. That seems to be the majority. So, um, of, of, of the voting members. So, so we will continue this to our next meeting, which is in one week. Ms. Shansky, that's, uh, on, um, when is it? It's May 1st?
May 1st.
May 1st. So, anything else, um, Ms. Shansky or from commission members or, or staff?
Uh, I don't think so, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I do want to say though with some emphasis that, that what Mr. Schmitz is providing vis a vis the, um, lot coverage is his calculations that arrive at his conclusion, not that the conclusion hasn't been arrived at, which...
No, I, I, I understand that. So we can provide that and if necessary, our town engineer can look at it and, uh, uh, you know, confirm it. Cause it was right at 60 is what it's, it's what it sounded like.
And, and, you know, they were not the original engineers of record. So their fresh look at it is a fresh look at it.
And, and, and that's, and that's good. And it, and it differed from what the prior engineer had said. So why not just give it to us? We can look at it. We can confirm it and sign off on it. So with that, um, then we'll continue this banner to our next, our meeting next week on May 1st. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that brings us then to, uh, old business, uh, which is, uh, old business, 22 Beechwood Road. Um, that we have a, uh, special exception for accessory apartment. We've scheduled a public hearing for that on May 15th. And, uh, so that'll be, um, so will happen. Nothing to do on that one. And then under new business, uh, 301 Main Street, there is a special exception for grading, section 6.8 application. We'll have to establish a public hearing. I believe that one will also be scheduled for May 15th. Which brings us then to minutes. We have minutes of April 3rd. Um, I think they were sent out with our packet as people had a chance to review those and if anyone wants to make a motion for those.
I'll make that motion. Fred Russo.
Fred makes a motion to approve the minutes. Is your second? And Joe, did I hear a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Joe Chadwick seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And the chair's also in favor. Okay, um, there is an echo that I'm hearing though, that I'm hearing. Sometimes it's Joe Vayuso, but I, I'm not sure.
It is.
Okay. Okay, let's go, um, is there any correspondence as far as we know?
Uh, there is, uh, there were four items of correspondence. Uh, the first you guys are aware of is the DP, DEP comments on Mariners Landing, which was sent out to everyone as part of...
And, and Mr. Whackers, I think they, in that deep letter, they talked about a flood plan, uh, or something, and if they don't have one, they should have one. Perhaps we could throw that in as a condition, which we are drafting a...
Sure. We can add that, uh, for staff comments for next week.
Right.
Um, we received then three other communications. One is from, um, Robinson Cole regarding, uh, a submission to Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. It's, it's about changing out, um, wireless facilities and certain public rights away. There's a list, uh, happy to share that. Um, it covers sites beyond Branford, um, but it is a, a mandatory notice. And we received, uh, a mandatory notice, a referral, uh, for comment from the town of Guilford. They're doing a zoning text amendment, just changing some, uh, some, uh, regulations to allow, I guess, a, a lower tiered review, staff review instead of a site plan approval from the commission. And we received a similar request from East Haven. Uh, they're also doing a text amendment and, uh, looking to change, uh, some regulations, um, about the level of review required for certain comments. None of those have specific site implications, um, that would impact, uh, Branford, uh, currently, um, uh, and is more procedural in, in the nature of, of the types of, uh, the text amendment will impact. So those are the, uh, correspondences that were received. Happy to share those if anyone wants to see a copy.
Great. Thank, uh, Chuck Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Whackers. Um, okay, let's go back to other business, number one planner's report. And McKeel, why don't you, uh, that's you, and you maybe give a short inter, an introduction and...
Yes, I'll keep it short since we do have, uh, one other significant item we need to get to. Um, but happy to meet everyone and then see you guys interacting as a commission. Uh, my name is McKeel Whackers, uh, new town planner. Um, have 20 years' experience in municipal government. I was a director of planning, conservation, development in Middletown, Connecticut. Um, and then eight years ago relocated to, to Cleveland, Ohio, where I worked for the city of Cleveland. Um, initially as assistant director of community development and then director of community development there. Uh, ran department of 81 staff, budget of $50 million a year focusing on, um, the city's land bank, which had 20,000 vacant parcels and then putting those back into production. The city's housing development office, um, uh, we, when I arrived there, we had 150 units of, um, housing that were, were developing each year. And last year I was able to increase it up to 2,200 units of development, uh, in production. Um, also managed, uh, the city's, um, GIS, um, functions, uh, as well as, uh, handling, uh, a significant number of, uh, federal, uh, state and local grants that the city implemented in neighborhoods, uh, to improve quality of life. Um, I, I was a political appointee, so I always had my eye on the door and figuring out, uh, with the change of administration, what I would be doing next. Uh, started looking around and, um, uh, Branford, uh, was a, eh, opportunity for me to come back to Connecticut. I also come back to a city, um, that I've, uh, of a smaller scale. I really miss, uh, the opportunities that, or the experience I had in Middletown and found a lot of similarities here while different, especially being a coastal community. Um, uh, Middletown obviously wanted to reconnect to the river, uh, Connecticut River. And I see that sort of desire here to make sure we have a strong connection to the coast and, and our waterways. Um, uh, probably in about two weeks, I'm going to be sharing with you some analysis I've been doing, uh, just for, to get my sense and, and grounding with what the regulations do, but also where there might be opportunities to sort of explore, um, what, uh, what, how we can look to ensure that these regulations reflect the values that the commission holds and that the community holds as well. Uh, so I'll be in, uh, probably be looking to send out a report uh, in two weeks, uh, for discussion, uh, at my planner's report, uh, on May 15th. And with that, I'll allow us to move further down the agenda, but happy to meet all of you.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, McKeel. Uh, we've got two bond establishments and one, one bond establishment, bond return. So on, on your other business, I number two, they have a bond establishment for 23 Prospect Hill Road. Can, uh, someone, uh, give us the background for that one?
Uh, Jane Ellis, CEO. That is a bond request for $10,000. It is for landscaping and driveway. They finished the housing portion. However, they haven't had time to, um, seed it and it take yet and the driveway, um, they're waiting on a utility company that might be doing underground electrical from overhead. So they want to bond out at this time to give them a little bit more time for Eversauce to get back to them.
Great. And you agree about the amount?
Yes.
Okay. Someone will make a motion to establish a $10,000 bond for landscaping driveway for 23 Prospect Hill Road.
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion by Joe Chadwick. Is there a second?
Fred Russo will second that.
Backened by Fred. Further discussion. All in favor? Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
In favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And chair's also in favor. And then we have a bond return for 1819 Etzel Road. Jane, you got that one?
I certainly do. $10,000 seems to be the number. And they would like their bond returned. They have finished, um, everything there. We have an as-built on file. Everything has been checked. And it was an original, um, bond for silt fence... And it was an original bond for silt fence and tracking pad, which obviously has been taken care of at this time.
Great. Thank you, Jane. Someone make a motion to return the bond of $10,000 for 18-19 Etzel Road?
Fred Russo will make that motion.
Fred makes that motion to return that bond. Is there a second?
Chadwick seconds.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo is in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And chair is also in favor. Okay, the next item is an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation, particularly Faulkner Island Development LLC versus Branford Planning Zoning Commission and then HCV 2561 508871 in the Spirit Court of Judicial District of New Haven. We have our town attorney with us. And I think what we need to do is, is go into executive session, indicate who's coming into the executive session. And then there's the technology question of whether we do a different room or how do we do this? Because it is not open to the public. And it's again to discuss the spending litigation. Jane, do you have any suggestions as to how we do this or?
Our John G, our interim assistant planner, is going to take you into a different room and I am going to pause the recording that we have right now.
Okay. So, okay, go ahead, John.
So yeah, Mr. Chairman, John Guskowski, yeah, once you, once you make the motion and go into executive session, yeah, Jane will pause the recording. We'll go into a breakout room. I will, basically all commission members and invited staff will receive a note on your screen that says, you know, you've been invited to go to the breakout room and you just say, you know, select, you'll pop over there. And that's basically an invitation-only room. We'll have the executive session with the recordings off there. Anyone who wishes to remain, any members of the public who wish to remain are able to, and you'll stay here in the main Zoom room. And, and all of the commissioners will return to the main Zoom room for the, for the wrap-up of the, of the meeting following executive session. So that's what will happen. So I, I have Mr. Chairman right now. I have the people going into executive session. I'm going to read a list and you tell me if I'm missing anybody. Bill Anisikovich, Chuck Andrus, Dave Dyer, Fred Russo, Joe Chadwick, Joe V, Vayuso, Marcy Paluzzi, Massimo and McKeel.
Yeah, we mentioned everyone, right? Joe Chadwick, yeah.
My apologies, Sharon will be added as well.
Okay. Oh, okay. Great. Thanks, Henry.
So once you move then, and everyone will get their, their invitation to jump into the room.
Right. And then in terms of staff, it's, it's yourself, John Guskowski, McKeel Whackers, and I think Jane, you're staying out, right?
Yes, Michelle and I were staying out.
Okay. So in addition to those commission members, it's in our town attorney, Bill Anisikovich, also John Guskowski and McKeel Whackers. Okay, does someone want to move to go in executive session to discuss the pending litigation Faulkner Island Development LLC versus Branford Planning Zoning Commission with those people mentioned attending?
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion by Joe Chadwick. Is there a second?
Fred Russo will second.
Second by Fred. All those in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And chair is also in favor. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna.
Recording stopped.
Okay, Jane, I'm going to jump over. Text me if something's happening.
Yeah, I stopped the recording.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org. You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org. Watch Town Meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.
You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford.
Recording in progress.
We're out of executive session. I think it's about 9:29. There were no votes taken. So, there we go. And I think, I think that's it for our agenda, correct? That was the last item on our agenda. That was the last item on our agenda. So, uh, so I think we're ready to adjourn if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn. Fred, I think you did, but you're muted.
Marcy will make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, Marcy makes motion adjourn with Fred second. All those in favor. Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
I'm in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
In favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
And Chair's also in favor. So, good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.